Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the town of Trumbull. For June 3rd, 2025. I'm gonna ask our clerk to do a roll call if she would.
Richard Gerard.
Present.
John Loria.
Here.
Carmine DeFeo.
Here.
Rich Deacon.
Present.
David Varespi.
Present.
Greg Cernica.
Present.
Bob Frigno.
Present.
Town staff Tatiana Solovey.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
And attorney Jim Cordell.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Colleen. At this point, I'm going to ask our town attorney to give us the legal aspect of doing a Zoom meeting, if you would, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As is the practice of this commission, we are conducting the meeting by Zoom over the internet and telephone. The agenda was posted 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting, along with any supporting application materials. There is a public hearing tonight, and at that time, if the public wishes to speak, you may be recognized by electronically raising your hand, or if you're only on the phone by dialing star nine. We'll provide that instruction again later. I would ask everyone to be acknowledged by the chairman before speaking. To please identify yourself before speaking, and I would ask that all votes be by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. Lastly, tonight's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, we're opening Old Business Application 25-14. Trevor Dodds and Stephanie Erquidi. It's a revised application. It's a permit approval to extend fenced-in area backyard. Remove 361 square feet of existing wetlands, which we offset by the creation of 1,135 square feet of new wetlands through excavation and grading exceeding the three-to-one replication ratio. Add native plantings and boulders along eastern edge of Vernal Pool to enhance protection within a regulated area at 622 Booth Hill Road. And this is a modification of Application 25-05. Okay.
Good evening, all. Trevor and Stephanie here. Let me pull up the planting plan.
Okay.
So, just to catch everyone up, I know we've been here a few times and you guys completed your site walk since we last spoke with you. The, what we're discussing tonight is simply the the extension of the fenced-in area from a previously approved permit. If you recall, the initial permit has a fence just around the pool area, and our proposal is to extend the fenced-in area to enclose the entire backyard. As part of that proposal, there will be 361, this green area, 361 square feet of wetlands that would be removed and enclosed in our backyard. And the red area would be new wetlands added, a thousand, well, over a thousand, or sorry, 1,100 square feet of new wetlands added. We've, you know, since our last meeting, have added some detail over here on the wetlands planting plan, planting table to show how the wetlands will be created through the grading and then refill. And we have added and adjusted the planting plan to protect the Vernal Pool a little bit more through, you know, additional plantings in the northeast corner and the, I guess, both north corners, and then through the middle protection via the fence. I'll pause there. I know, I know folks were out onsite and happy to take questions, but just to catch everyone up on what the proposal is and sort of changes since our last meeting.
All right, at this point, I'm gonna ask our engineers, John or Tatiana, if you have any comments?
There are no engineering comments. I know during the walk, there was a question that we counted 13 stumps versus 12 trees were approved for removal last time. There was a question of how the Vernal Pool can be protected better. And there were questions about new wetlands, the details of how they can be created, which I believe was added to this plan. So these were just highlights from the walk, but no engineering comments from staff.
All right, thank you, Tatiana. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the commission. Remember, go through the chair because I can only see part of you. Any comments, questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Just a question about the creation of the new wetlands. I know there were some concerns in the past. Obviously, the creation of new wetlands as a mitigation can be useful, and also in certain times has been, has proven to be troublesome. If staff could just briefly go over the plan for that, obviously, there was also a concern that, you know, neighboring landholders who were not within 100 feet might suddenly find themselves within 100 feet by no fault of their own, which is its own issue. But if someone could just briefly, whether it's staff or the applicant, just briefly explain the plan for the execution of the mitigation.
Okay, Tatiana, you're muted.
Sorry.
I didn't know it was that easy.
I was just asking if the applicant wishes to show the detail where the wetlands are gonna be created. There you go. Have you had discussion with your environmental professional? Can you explain any details to the commission?
Yeah, so my, my understanding here is that we'd excavate, you know, six inches below the elevation of the adjacent wetland, and then backfill with, with the, with six inches of topsoil, you know, which with the, with the mixture of organic soil, you know, lends itself to wetlands creation.
So the wetlands creation itself is, is placing six inches of soil, and that soil is a wetland soil?
Yeah, regrading, right, to make sure the grade is correct, and then, and then, yes, correct, it's the one-to-one mixture of the high-quality organic soil.
And then adding in the plants.
Okay, and that wetland is gonna be, is that this new soil creation, is that directly connected to the existing natural wetland?
Yeah, yeah, the dark gray here is the existing wetland, so it's adjacent.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
You know, I still have, I have some of the same concerns that Mr. Deacon has with the excavation of soil within this area and the disturbance of roots of existing trees when you start excavating out in this area. You know, what adjacent trees are gonna be affected by that, that excavation. And the, the boulders may be more useful on the upland edge of that created wetland area so they can act as a demarcation for that area. But otherwise, the plantings look appropriate and, and look good.
All right, thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Keep in mind, I can't see you, so you gotta speak up.
Through the chair. This is Greg Cernica.
Go ahead, Greg, I see you there.
To the applicant, what, what was the decision or what was the rationale for removing the soil? Is it compacted? Is that the?
Sorry, I don't think we're gonna be removing soil. It'll all be regraded. Am I misunderstanding?
It needs, so I think, I think, I, I think I get what you're asking. So it needs to be graded to the same grade as the wetlands in order to create the wetlands. It can't be at the grade it's at. So it's not really removing it, it's just changing the grade of it.
Okay, cuz I thought someone said you're gonna remove it and then replace.
That's just, that's just regrading, if you see the picture here.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
If you're going to be regrading in that area, you're like, you said, the, the soil is going to be removed to be brought down and regraded to the adjacent area of the wetlands next to it. That soil either is going to be removed from sight, or it would be deposited elsewhere on the property, and if it's deposited elsewhere on the property, where is it going? You know, just regrading doesn't mean you just push it down and it goes away. You actually have to dig it out and put it somewhere.
Yeah, there you go. Our existing application, if you recall, calls for the leveling out of the property in this area, so that, that soil would go toward that, along with the soil from the pool.
Okay, fair enough.
And if you remember from the walk, the reason they're doing that is there's a lot of roots and things from the trees, so they're trying to level that off. So, all right, anyone else from the commission?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Has your engineer given you the amount of soil that will be removed and the amount that will be added in a, you know, gross amount?
No, they have not.
Is this for the, are you asking for the pool or for the, this area?
No, the, no, the pool is a non, you're already approved for that.
Yeah, okay. It's six inches of 360 square feet, so.
1,100?
Oh, crack, right.
Yes, it's about six, six inches of the 11, 1,100 square feet, so ballpark, what's that, around 7,000 square feet?
So it looks like from the area.
It's about, it's about 600 cubic feet.
Right, which is about 21 cubic yards.
21 cubic yards of filtered topsoil or of the wetland cement?
Both, actually, because they're removing.
It's actually both.
Right.
Okay. So the soil they're removing, they're, they're putting back on site?
Yep.
All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, at this point, the applicants have anything else they'd like to add?
Richard, I have one other question.
Go ahead, Carmine.
As far as the trees that have been removed, will the regrading be covering those stumps that are left, or will the stumps be exposed?
It'll be covering the stumps.
Yeah, as we got approved last, it's really just these, these couple here. But that was the discussion in the previous approval.
Thank you.
All right, again, any other questions, comments from the commission? Okay. Mr. Dodds, Ms. Erquidi, is there any other comments you have before I go to motion on this?
Nope.
You're good? All right, Greg?
Yes, like to make a motion to approve Application 2514.
As submitted with?
Pardon?
I said as submitted with, and then the following conditions that you put on.
Yeah, as, as submitted according to the following conditions from the Town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, Section 1, General Conditions 1.1 to 1.10. And then, I believe, I'd like to add 2.8 all tree trumps, stumps to remain unless specifically approved, and we are not approving removing of stumps. So I would say all tree stumps to remain. 2.9 all new planting shall have survivor, survivability period of one year minimum or as determined by the town engineer. Okay, and I guess that's what I see.
Tatiana, have we missed anything that you can think of?
There was a comment about boulders. I'm not sure if the commission is comfortable with where they are, or?
David's comment about, David, can you chime in again, your comment about using, I think, to demarc, as a demarking or something?
Yes, I had recommended moving the boulders to the top of the slope as opposed to the edge of the current wetland, so it would just become a demarcation point for the future.
All right, so let's add that if you would.
I apologize. Can, can I clarify, please? So are we putting boulders in parallel with the fence? Is that the intent?
No, if you look at the plan, they've kind of got them lined along the existing wetlands boundary. And on the, on the left wetland, yes, it would be in line with the fence, and on the right wetland that they're creating, it would be sort of going straight out from the fence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we kind of closed the discussion. There wasn't, just in fairness to the applicant, there wasn't a back and forth on this, so I don't know if we want to invite them back into the discussion, because that is sort of changing their plan. It may impact the yard, Commissioner Varespi. I understand your intent, but.
Well, let me do this. If the applicants, they're still on board, are you okay with that condition?
I'm still confused personally where you would like the boulders to go. Can you, can you show us, like, where are you?
You want to put the plan back up, and David will walk you through it.
Commissioner Varespi, is this a material item, you think?
It, it's not overly material. It just sort of becomes a point for future demarcation. So Tatiana, go to that wetland there, and they've got the line of boulders along the edge of the existing wetland boundary. Move them five or six feet to the east along the proposed new edge of the wetland boundary there, so it becomes a line of demarcation. And on the other one, it looks like they've got two boulders, one and two, and just move those two behind the fence. So they become, again, like a line of demarcation.
Through the chair.
It doesn't materially change the plan.
Well, first, are you okay with that condition?
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you. Rich, you had a comment?
Yeah, this is for Commissioner Varespi. I think you and I both are of the mind that the application is not faulty. It's, it's the, the concept of widespread dumping to create these new wetlands. Well, I think the application is, is great. There's gotta be some other way to solve the problem without simply placing soil, you know, six inches of soil and, and put it adjacent to water and then call it a wetland. I mean, it's a we're deleting, you know, arable land from this property. Does, does that wetland creation actually help anyone in any way, including the landowner? I feel like we're hamstringing everyone here.
It really becomes an equalization. They're making the fence line go straight across the backyard. They're removing two areas of wetlands, or that equals about 361 square feet, and they're giving up area on the wetland side of the fence of approximately, looks more than 361 square feet of area that they wouldn't be using and are voluntarily regrading it so that, you know, the, the soil profile over time will become a more wetland soil, and the plantings will support wildlife and, you know, water absorption, etc. So it will, it will provide the wetlands function over time. And they're doing that in exchange so they can basically normalize a line across the backyard.
And I don't have a problem with them normalizing the line. I, I just, my, my concern is this creation of a wetland, would we be better off not requiring this creation because of the fact that it requires dumping, excavation? Is, is all of that in the long run beneficial to the land? Is that better than simply allowing them the small amount of filling that's already happening?
It's been the practice of this commission that anytime that wetlands have been removed, that the square footage of removed wetlands is remediated, and either new wetlands is created or some other means of remediation.
That's what they're doing, Rich.
Certainly appropriate here.
All right, you're good?
I, no, but clearly, no one's jumping on board with me, so that's fine.
You're out there on your own, man.
All right. Through, through the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I, I apologize, because Mr. Cernica was finishing a motion, and I, I interjected in the process. So maybe we should finish the motion and then continue the discussion.
Okay, yeah, and I'll clean up the third additional condition, that would be 3.1. Move boulders away from the wet, the current wetlands border. For example, on the right or the east, eastern wetlands, move the boulders farther east to the edge, and the western wetland, move the boulders, I'm guessing that's south, behind the fence.
Correct.
Mr. Cernica, question?
Yeah.
Could, could it be more inexpensive for the applicant to, instead of engaging someone to move the boulders, to simply put some type of wooden posts with the placards that we have in stock in the office? Be significantly cheaper than having them get machinery out there in that area, moving the boulders. If the boulders are not bothering them as they are, the
Through the chair.
With the wooden delineation.
Go ahead, Tatiana. I'm assuming they have them there.
I believe these are new boulders.
Yeah. So, but I mean, you know, it's, it's what they're, they're looking to do, so.
Are these special weapons boulders?
All right, clearly my, clearly misguided in multiple attempts to save the applicant money and time are going unnecessarily ignored, so I won't push any longer.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, Greg, you're good?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and then you had your hand up. What do you need there, Carmine?
Well, as mentioned by Rich Deacon, whether or not any of the placards should be placed on some of the boulders to further.
We could do, and not the boulders, but what if we go across the fence? There's gonna be fence posts there, so that's gonna basically say, hey, there's wetlands beyond this.
I personally don't understand the purpose of the boulders, and they could either do boulders or posts with placards on them, or put the placards on the fence. I'm not sure the, the purpose of the boulders in the plan, but, you know, they're there, so I'm just saying, place them someplace else, but, you know, it's I think that if the client has the option to do one or the other, I think that's fine.
Can we leave that option to the applicant and have them just get personal approval from the town engineer, whatever option they choose?
Yes, that makes you happy, it's fine. So let's go with that then. Tatiana, you think we should put some markers on the fence posts going across the back? At least to note that past that point, it's basically all wetlands, so.
If the commission desires to do so, sure, we'll provide placards to the applicant, but there is one no move zone that is technically not a wetland.
That, that's, I'm aware of, so. All right, is there anything else? We've got this seconded? We're good? Now, it's my understanding that Commissioner Loria is gonna recuse himself? All right, all right, we're gonna bring this to a vote?
Uh, through the chair. Yes, one quick question. So I'm gonna amend 3.1 that the applicant will work with town engineering to decide which, what they prefer that's acceptable with engineering, whether to put markers on the bolt, on, move the boulders and put markers on them, put posts in with placards, or put placards on the fence.
You got it.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, so as I said, we're bringing it to a vote. I'm a yes. Bob?
Yes.
Carmine?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And one abstention from Commissioner Loria.
Yes.
All right, so that's very good. Okay, I need a motion to close Old Business.
So moved.
Seconded by, I see Bob Frigno's hand up. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going into Application 25-10, excuse me, which is Amelia Ferrari. They've asked for a continuance on this. I believe we have to do a vote on this, right, Attorney Cordell?
We do, and there's also Application 2511. I believe there's also a continuance on that for the same.
Can we do the two of them together?
You may do the two together, continuing to your next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, so, so Application 21-07 and Application 25-11. Both are Amelia Ferry. They've asked for a continuance to our July meeting.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
What's the first application? Because the agenda notice is 2510.
That and 11.
That's the, the test pits to permit approval legally, let's see, 2107. There was three there, so it would be also 2510 on that also. Good catch.
10 and 2511, Mr. Chairman.
Right. And 2107.
2107 is, is a modificate, it's being modified. It's 2107. 2510 is modifying 2107. So there's two applications, 2510 and 2511.
Let's see where we are here. Yep, yep, okay, so we're good on that one. And let's see, so we've got a motion out there. Okay, actually, I just went through it. Who's gonna, the chairman can't make the motion, so who would?
Okay, Greg.
So moved on that, seconded by Bob Frigno. All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
No, no, Rich, 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 I voted against the continuance.
Okay, and again.
For both of them.
Commissioner Loria abstained, so it's five for, one against, and one abstention. All right, let's go to Application 25-13. Greg, can you read the legal notice on that for me?
Yes, let me, what did I do with the note?
If you're still working on that, I can do it for you if you'd like.
No, I, I've got it here. This is, the Town of Trumbull gives notice that Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 3rd at 7:00 PM via video conference on Application 2513. Joseph Giuliano, a permit approval for the restoration plan and pool within a regulated area at 17 Applegate Lane. Copy the application and maps are on file to Town Engineer's Office, Town of Trumbull, or on the Town of Trumbull website. Comments should have been sent to c.lombardo@trumbelconnecticut.gov 24 hours in advance. Submitted by Richard H. Gerard, Chairman, on the 7th day of May, 2025.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's see, I see Mr. Danzer's here. He's gonna be representing the client. Go ahead.
Good, good evening to the commission. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Giuliano, but also who will be participating in this will be Tracy Chalafau, landscape architect. But also who will be, um, participating, this will be Tracy Chalafou, landscape architect. Um, as well, and, um, I'm not sure if Manny Silva, the, uh, our engineer is here, but if he's here, he, he may be, uh. Speaking as well, as well as the applicant, uh, Mr. Giuliano. Um, anyway, my name is, uh, Steve Danzer, I'm a soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, uh, based in Stanford, uh, Connecticut. Um, I believe some of you, uh, joined us on the sidewalk, I'm gonna assume that no one, um, I'm just gonna start from, from the beginning. And the first thing I'm gonna do is just give you a brief overview of the wetlands and the conservation easement issue. Um, then Tracy is gonna, uh, come in and, and talk about the, uh, proposed, um, pool as well as the restoration plan. And then if, um, Mr. Silva is there, um, he will be available to answer any questions about the engineering. Um, anyway, all right, um, first thing I'd like to do is share the screen, um, I'm gonna. If, uh. Uh, share. All right, let's see if this works, should, okay, um. Let me just leap out that window, um. Everybody can see the screen, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I just wanna start off with the, uh, the topo, the most recent topo map. Um, this was done, um, last fall. Um, this is the site, this is the existing residence. Um, most of the wetlands are wooded and they're generally through here. And they kind of grade to the northwest, which is in this direction. Um, the original wetland line back in nineteen eighty-nine is depicted, or what may have been the original wetland line. Is depicted here. And more importantly, down here. Um. And it goes across here, and that is also on the deed as a conservation easement. Um, the conservation easement language, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, um, was, um. Uh, submitted as part of my original soils report, I don't know if, if I noticed it didn't make the, uh, the online website, um, part. But it's been submitted and, and nowhere in the conservation easement did they refer this as the wetland limit line. Um, however, for whatever reason, it was, this was referred to on the original nineteen, um, eighty-nine subdivision map. For Iron, Iron Gates Estates. Um, in any case, um, around here, the other notable thing is that sometime during the eighties. Um, a wear, basically a dam was installed here. Um, a storm drain, a pipe was installed here and a berm was, um, installed over it in order to allow, um. Trespass from here to Saint Joseph's School over here. Um, and that was all prior to this residence that was built in the early, in the mid to late nineties, I, 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 I believe. Um. Okay, so, um, Mr. Giuliano, um, when he acquired the property, I believe in twenty-eighteen. Uh, he was concerned because there was, uh, pooled watering down around here and it was eroding the slope. And if you see where the slope is with, uh, respect to his, um, the back of his residence. Um, he was rightfully concerned about the slope eroding away, it was starting, basically starting to erode away. So he took it upon himself to engage with landscapers, um, without authorization, um. And he rip-wrapped this and he put a little bit more fill over here in order to, um, plant, um, some screening. Um, and he basically ripped wrap from here to here, and then there's, there's lesser amounts of rip wrap around here. But the bulk of the rip wrap is, is around here. And while he did that, he also pushed out, um, from what was existing in twenty-eighteen, a little bit out. From here to here and here to here, this is a very, um, relatively, um, thin a foot or so of, uh. Soil over what, what I believe is, 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 is the wetlands. Um. Prior to that, going back to what was supposedly going on in the nineteen eighties, the wetland, they. It says wetland limit line, they believe the wetland limit line was over here. So one of the issues that I was tasked was, was to figure out where the wetland line was. So back in the fall, I went out and this was what my determination was, um. And understanding that around, around here, that there was some fill, especially over here, um, actually not over there, um, over here. Um, that was kind of in, in, into the wetland. At the time, I was inconclusive on whether or not there was wetlands here, um. At the time, I thought, I encountered what I thought was soil compaction, which I changed my opinion upon of since, um. But I came up inconclusive, I'm not saying that there wasn't a wetland back up here. But if it was, it was filled probably about the time when they did the residence. Or there might have never been a wetland out here, I just did not find enough soil samples that had anything that, that, that told me that, that there was a wetland. Fast forward to last week, we were out here with the sidewalk and the commissioners rightfully were kind of asking about this area, which is by the way, all lawn. Um, or is now maintained as lawn. And they asked me if I had any test hole data, and I said honestly, when I went out here in the fall, I did not record any. Cause normally when you do a normal wetland delineation, you just dig your holes, you determine what you wanna determine, and you generally don't do soil logs. Um, however, um, the, the, I, of since the commissioners wanted more information, so we went back out there in a rush on. I believe last Wednesday, and I drilled a series of holes, um. Um, over here and one here, uh, way away, and. Um, from what I can figure out, um, um, my results from back in the fall are still valid. I could not find any evidence of wetlands here, um. But more interesting is that, um, my opinion changed about this area, um. I'm not even convinced that this area was actually filled. Um, and the reason why is I took a soil sample out here. Um, where this area was, has never been disturbed, even back from the eighties onto here. I mean, I could just tell that all the, the, there's mature trees that are, that are basically uniform, this is not lawn. And the soil that I saw here was roughly the same as the soil types that were over here. So I'm not saying that, again, that there wasn't a wetland here originally, but I am searching, I'm searching, I'm searching, and I just can't find. Any evidence that there is a wetland there now, or that there really was back then. And more interesting, this thing, soil sample six, is in an area that they claimed in the eighties was wetland. Wherein clearly it is not, and I don't even think back in the eighties that was wetland. I think, um, the, the, the wetland line was always, always somewhere around here. And this, and the last part about that picture is, like I said before, there was a berm, um, that was put in here. Uh, this line is the orig, maybe it was the original line, but this line doesn't reflect the berm that was put in, in, in the nineteen eighties. So if there was some modifications, it was done after this wetland, this, this, this wetland line. So anyway, that, that's kind of my take and, and we can get into more of a discussion if, if you're, um. Still, um, you know, wanna discuss that issue, um.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
How deep did you go with your holes?
Um, good question, uh, we will pull it up, um, I, I went down to twenty-two inches, uh, let me expand this. Um, these are my soil bor, borings, um, twenty inches, twenty-two, thirty inches, and I hit groundwater not until twenty-eight. Uh, twenty-one, twelve and twenty-two. And the interesting thing, and I go back to what I was saying before, when I was on the sidewalk, I said I thought there was compaction. My opinion has changed on that, and the reason is, and that's where it goes down to why I couldn't go below twenty inches here. Or twenty-two inches there. Um, let me go back to here. If you walk out in the woods and you're walking right in this area, what you see is exposed rocks, boulders. Um, I believe that layer of boulders continues all the way through here. And that's what I'm hitting when I get down to twenty-two inches. It's basically these exposed boulders un, underneath here. I just, I just assumed, you know, thinking about the history back fall, that that was soil compaction, that someone brought in fill and all that. But now I'm actually thinking that the, that when I hit and I couldn't go down twenty-two is because I basically hit that same level of boulders. That, that are now exposed over here, that just continue a, a, across there. Um, anyway, so that's, that's, did I answer your, sort of my, answered your question there? Um, and actually, that's all I have to really say unless you wanna get into more detail of that issue, um. And I know Tracy's gonna talk about this, um, part of this application is about a restoration for the, for the work, um. That the applicant did without authorization here, um. But part of this application is for a pool that very slightly encroaches, uh, I believe the grading encroaches into the conservation area. And again, we'll get into this more in detail, but I just wanna, uh, throw out when, when you read the easement. The easement does not flatly rule out the possibility of future work in the conservation easement. It just says merely that any such work is subject to review and approval by your commission. So that conservation easement that was written back in the eighties was not prohibitive. And, um, it basically says you can do certain things within that area. If you, uh, obtain permission, and that's one of the reasons why, why, why we're here today. Um, anyway, um, it's your choice whether you wanna ask me questions or we can move on to Tracy with the site plan design.
Well, again, you did send out a, uh, location of the test holes, uh. It was done on May twenty-ninth. And, uh, if you wanna put that on the, uh, screen so the commissioners can get an idea of where you did your five, or rather six. Six test holes here.
Uh, let me, uh. And this, again, this is posted on your website as, as well, um. Okay, that, that, there it is, so. One, two, three, four, five, and then this six as, as a reference.
All right, so it was in that one area then, all right?
Yeah, and like I said, I chose six because I could clearly tell, looking on the surface of the soil, that. Unlike these areas, which is now lawn, that this area most likely has not changed since the nineteen eighties. Um, it's the same soil uniform, so I figured that would be a, a good place to see what the natural soil conditions are. And in the, and while I did that, what I realized, um, was this area was definitely in the upland now. And probably was in the upland back in the nineteen, um, back in nineteen eighties as well. So I think this wetland limit line is, was a little bit, um, ambitious. And also, if you go back to. Where was it, uh? One, one of the maps that, that we did submit, uh, was a nineteen ninety-seven map, I believe, um. Yeah, I, I, maybe Tracy can pull it up later, um, when she gets to that. It actually says approximate limit of wetland, of wetland line, it actually says that. It doesn't say is the definitive wetland line, um, it says approximate. And again, that, I think that was mapped teeth, uh, that was a reference map, uh, that we just submitted, um, that was actually given to us. Um, by your, your staff to try to understand the changes between nineteen ninety-seven and, and now. Oh yeah, and there is one, one, one more important thing, thing before I hand it over to Tracy. Um, we do have elevations from twenty-sixteen courtesy of the state of Connecticut, what they call LiDAR. Um. I believe that, or I, rather not, I believe, but I think that twenty-sixteen. Elevations is more or less what's been going on the site since probably the eighties or, or, or nineties. Since, and it, whatever happened after they, 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 they did this. And essentially what we're asking to do as far as the restoration is more or less bring us back in most places to that twenty-sixteen line. The exception, and Tracy can get into it, the exception of, of this, this area. Um, what's important is that the Giulianos acquired the property in twenty-eighteen. So anything that happened, so even if that area was filled and, um, as reflected in twenty-sixteen, they didn't, they did not do that. They, they moved into it in twenty-eighteen, that, that part was already done. But I think there's a pretty good, um, um, chance that that twenty-sixteen line has been there for twenty years before that is, as well. Um, okay, I guess Tracy?
Well, before we do that, uh, commissioners, any questions for, uh, Mr. Danzer before we move to, uh, Tracy?
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Greg.
Um, Mr. Danzer, can you walk one more time through the, where is the so-called conservation easement line?
Okay, sure. All right, see here where it says conservation easement line, okay. Uh, I'm gonna start to the left, which is, I obscured my, uh, arrow, so it's to the, um. Uh, northeast, um. I'm just walking over it.
Okay.
And, yeah, and one thing about the conservation easement line, um, the purpose of the conservation easement. I believe that the purpose of the conservation easement, and I said this in writing, in, in this middle, um, this middle narrative, um. Was to give a certain protection to the wetlands that was down here. Um, I don't think even back then, they really had any pretenses that, that this area ecologically would be valuable. I think it was more of a physical thing, and the reason why is that you think of what they approved, it's kind of nuts. You have a house and you look at how close this house is from the conservation easement. I mean, you can argue, well, okay, that's, that was the, that was the trade-off in, in putting one last lot here. But I don't see how you could put a house here and, and expect this area over many years to, to meaningfully, you know. Provide any ecological value, I mean, you, presumably people are gonna be using their property. I'm not even talking about whether or not they encroach here or convert this to lawn, but it's just, there's a lot of human activity, right? Next residential activity, look at the walkway, you know, look at the distances. So I believe that this area was basically put on, you know, probably before they had an idea of what the house was. But I think the, the primary purpose of this was to give some physical distance between this and even back then, where the, where, where the wetland resources really were. Um, anyway, I, I, I've gone a little bit astray, I apologize for that. But the other thing about the conservation easement line is there's a backline, and this is, this is the backline, this, this is a slope. Up here, when I did the original wetland delineation, I stopped here because I honestly didn't know where, that, that, the property boundary extended that far up the slope. I thought I was already there.
All right, I believe, was that, um, David that had the, uh, question?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Uh, Mr. Danzer, the conservation easement wording, I think would be very important here. Um, it was put onto the land record and it was put onto this lot. Um. For a specific reason, and whatever that reason was, we may not, we may not know at this point. But it's not something that was intended to be ignored or walked over. Or just there for, for looking pretty. Um, and apparently it has been ignored and. It has been, you know. Those areas that were set aside for conservation have not been set aside for conservation. Uh, those areas typically should be maintained in a natural state unless approved by the commission. And this commission, to my knowledge, has not approved any work in that location, we have not approved lawns or, or whatnot. In that area, in that area would intend to be kept in a natural state. Um. I mean, there's lots of cases where there's been, you know, significant work. Or less significant work done in conservation easements that have required more signi, significant remediation. And extended legal battles, um, to correct actions that were not as egregious as this. Um. So, you know, I can't read that, it's too small on your screen.
Sure, sure, it, 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 it should be part of your submittal, and if it didn't make it in with my soils report, I'll be more than happy to.
It is not part of the submittal.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah, I can't speak for the town process, but we had submitted that in, um. Yeah, so.
But in the comparison of the tope, the topography. Um. You know, the, what was on the original nineteen ninety-seven map compared to what is out there today, which is. What I'm assuming your T four is referencing, it appears that there's two to three feet of fill within. The majority of that conservation area behind the house.
Uh, okay, all right, so I can a, address that and then Tracy can probably follow up with that. First of all, uh, uh, I, I wanna circle back just for a second, um, um. I'm not defending anyone's right to, to, to alter a conservation easement, I think that is your decision. All I can do is give you the language, uh, or make sure that, that you're aware of the language and you can make your own decision. Um, that, that I, 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 I'm in agreement with almost everything that, that you said. I just ask that you act, that you read the language because it does talk about the, 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 the intent. Um, let's see if I can pull up T four. All right, so, oh, this is good, this, before I get to T four, this is, um. What we used as a base map, this was given us courtesy of the town, um, this was basically the nineteen ninety-seven map. Um, we use this to figure out what the existing nineteen ninety-seven conditions were, and using that, we, uh. Created T four, um. There's an assumption that, that map.
Can you maximize this on your screen?
All right, all right.
There you go.
Yeah.
Much better.
I'll be honest, I'm not, this is actually, as much as we've been well into the Zoom age, this is one of the first times I've actually used shared screens, so. I'm a little bit of a Luddite, so I apologize about that, um. All right, so. Yeah, I just cautioned you about that nineteen ninety-seven map that we used as a base map. We used that again because it was given to us courtesy of town staff. But we have no idea if even that was accurate, it, it's not an as-built. It's just a, uh, map for a sanitary, you know, it's basically the site plan with the sewer, and we, I guess it was built according to plan. Um, so I do caution, caution you about that, but that said, we did use that, um, to figure out the, the comparisons. And the other thing is that, um, let's just go down the, the, the possibility that this, that there is three feet of fill in areas. Because that nineteen ninety seven map was accurate. Um, that's great and everything, but the thing is, is that Mr. Giuliano didn't move into the house until twenty eighteen. We know in twenty sixteen that that area was, already did not reflect the, um, nineteen ninety seven conditions. So if that area was modified, it was modified twenty sixteen or more likely earlier. Now, I do understand, I'm not a lawyer, but I do understand that, like, you know, compliance does go with the property, um, and Mr. Giuliano probably walked into that. But I'm just saying, just keep in mind that what he had done, which is basically. Put riprap here and did some filling over, over here, he did not do this. And this area has been maintained for lawn by many, for many, 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 many years. Um, so again, you know, going back to what you're saying about the conservation easement and the sanctity and everything, just keep in mind that, um. Um, our current applicant was not the person that was responsible for the, the major alterations, if, if there were, were some. Um, he did some other alterations and we're basically trying to undo those and work on his pool application and we're in agreement with that. But just keep in mind that if anything happened over here, it happened prior to, to his, his ownership.
Alright, any other comments or questions for, uh, Mr. Danzer before we move to Tracy?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Uh, I just wanted to ask Mr. Danzer, on his report, there are notes, uh, next to each soil boring that identify a year and then some numbers. Could you please elaborate on what those mean? And also, it seems that boring number six. Is approximately five, six foot higher topographically than all the other borings. So I wonder if taking a boring in the natural state, um. Or preserved rather, uh, area in the same soil horizon would give you a different picture.
Um, the answer is perhaps, but the thing was is that. If we had done that, that would have put us in the wetlands. We already, I already knew that was wetlands. What I was, the purpose of, of, of six was I wanted to look at the, what the natural. Soil was, because what, what, what we're trying to agonize on, and I didn't get into this, I apologize, was. The question when we did one, two, three, four and five is. I know the soil that we are looking at was not wetland soil, and I'll get to that in a second while. But the question is, was that fill? Was that brought in? Um, am I looking at fill? Theoretically, had I been able to go down to forty inches, would I? Would I reach the bottom of the fill and get to the natural thing? That was the question I was trying to answer. And when I came over to six and I saw what the native soil, uh, the texture and the composition and, you know, basically what that soil was all about. What we concluded was the soil back in here, um, was most likely, I can't say. Totally, because you're never quite sure in this business, um. The, the soil that we were digging in here was most likely not fill soil. It was, looked like it was of the same type of structure. It looked like it didn't have a lot of disturbances. It, it wasn't like a totally different type of soil. It was basically the same. You know, the same type of soil, that, that's what I got out of that. As far as all this, I think, are you, uh, I assume you're asking about all this, this ten R, ten Y R five four thing?
Yes.
Alright, I can't really get into this because this is like. We could be here all night and you guys would be going to sleep, but this is basically the meat of the matter when you classify soils and figure out wetlands. There's something, there's three parameters you look at, hue, value and chroma. The ten Y R is hue, the value, this second number is a value and the third number is chroma. The, the short answer to all this is that chroma, that last value, anything two or less. Um, is most likely wetland soil. Um, it's a lot, uh, once you get off the, the, the topsoil layer, topsoil is a different story. But none of these chromas were low enough to qualify, um, as, as, as wetland soil. And then, then there's, there's, there's a whole nother thing about the value, but the, the short answer to this was, was the chroma. So if you look at this, um, six, six, four, six, four, six, eight. Uh, again, don't look at the topsoil, but three, six, four, none of those were two or one. Um, and that's, that's, that, that was kind of the key. Um, to, to interpreting this. Um, the other thing is that normally, um, if. There's no fill involved, I'm just doing a normal wetland delineation, I only go down to twenty, twenty-two inches, um, which is, is like in soil boring too. That's as far as we could get before we hit rock, um, but that's generally the, the, the standard. Um, below twenty-two, if you start seeing wetland features, that's normal for a non-wetland soil. Um, if you start seeing wetland features anywhere above eighteen inches or above, um, then you classify the soil as, as, as a wetland soil. And like I said, there, there's nothing in these numbers that really suggests that. And the final thing, and maybe I should have said that in the beginning, when you look at these numbers, what we see as color, that's, that's what these numbers are. This is the mathematical way of describing the, the, the color of, of the soil. And this all keys back to something called a Muncell color book, which we used in, in order to, um, to, to classify the soils.
Thank you so much, and just to confirm, twenty-two inches standard depth applies to areas that have not been previously filled. And if there appears to be a foot or two of fill, you would obviously go twenty-two inches.
You, you, you can, but the paradox is that once you're working in fill, sometimes it's, it's difficult, uh, using normal soils, uh, hand orders to, to go that, to go lower. That's just a kind, kind of a fact of life in working, working in Connecticut, um, but yeah. And then there's all types of interpretations, whether you're, um. What you do with the fill, just, just generally speaking, if there's, if, for example, if I know for sure that there's like eight inches of fill and, um. I hit natural soil below that, um, I just ignore this fill and I, I, I just classify it on, on the basis of the natural soil. But once you get into the twenty, eighteen to twenty inches, it gets a little bit more complicated as far as. Um, how you calculate the, uh, the, the, the depth of fill with regard to how you want to classify the, the, the soil.
Alright, any other comments be from the commission before we move to Tracy?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Um, I don't recall regarding the house, this is a hypothetical, does the house have a basement?
Um, I could not answer that, um, if, uh, we could ask Mr. Giuliano to, uh. If, if he's available.
Yes, yes, good evening, um, it, we do have a walkout basement. That, that goes right to that patio that you can see in the sketch.
So a hypothetical is that the excavation, when the house was built. Could have been spread out. Into what may have been wetland. And that soil would have been like you have identified. The original soil, like you found at test pole six.
That's possible, that's possible, and that was always my assumption from the beginning, um, to be honest, um, but yeah, that, that is possible.
Again, that's not. Anything to do with, uh, Mr. Giuliano, but, uh.
Yeah, if, if.
It could explain why you're finding. Similar soils in your test pole.
Yeah, if you go back to, I guess, my soils report, which you don't have, um, I actually. Said that if, it's likely if this area was filled, it might have been filled during the, 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 the construction of the house and I actually. Set that up as a possible scenario. So I, I'm in agreement with you as, as far as that as a possibility.
Alright. If we're good, we'll move to, uh, Tracy then.
Okay, uh, let me stop the share. Okay.
Commission members, um, now I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that okay?
Nothing so far.
Great, thank you. Oh, sorry, you said nothing so far? How about now?
Now, now you have it.
Okay. So, um, this, I'm zoomed in from the view that we had with Mr. Danzer. Um, so here's the existing residence, here's the existing walk and patio. And this is the area. Of, um, wetlands that we would like to restore to the pre-disturbance conditions, which would be around two thousand sixteen. So that's the contour data that we're using. So the intention is to remove the fill and this gravel here at the toe of the slope. And export that fill and gravel from the site. And bring this back to that two thousand sixteen topography so that the water makes its way in there. And then to restore it with native plants, um. We're calling for eleven trees and for thirty-three shrubs. Um, so these are the trees here that I'm hovering over, and then the smaller circles indicate shrubs. Any bare areas in between would be seeded with a native wetland seed mix. Um, but something that Mr. Gi- Giuliano is asking for is that he be able to maintain this established arborvitae hedge. Um, and the riprap slope behind it. And the purpose of that, there are a few purposes of this, um, he was very concerned about erosion that was happening within this basin. And this, this gravel, this riprap is helping to stabilize against that erosion. And also, um, the arborvitae's are helping, um, to screen the sound of Saint Joseph's. Um, silt fence would be installed at the toe of the slope at the perimeter of the work area. And, um, there, we would, um, have an environmental monitor on site while this excavation is happening. So that we can locate that hopefully undisturbed soil profile from two thousand sixteen beneath this. Construction access would be over here. An anti-tracking pad would be set up at the street. And, um. Yeah, once again, just this portion of gravel would remain, and you can see these are the proposed contours that are tying into the end of the berm. And then that berm would be extended with seven additional green giant arborvitae's and the native plants beyond into the south. The, it's, it's an approximate range of depth of fill, but we observed about zero to twenty-four inches of fill. Throughout this, this hatched area, obviously, there's more fill as you move out this way and less fill where it meets the existing. The previous existing topography. This is the wetland land as, uh, wetland line as it was flagged by Dr. Danzer, and then the conservation easement line is here. As for, um, the proposed swimming pool. Um, the Gi- Giulianos are asking for a fifteen by thirty liner type pool. And we would be attempting to balance the cut and fill for this. Um, we did look at a few different, actually several different pool concepts to see what size pool would be appropriate. And we studied, um, various renditions, you know, with a retaining wall, without a retaining wall. And we pretty quickly determined that fifteen by thirty is the size pool that, that is really appropriate in terms of fitting the area. There are no built elements proposed within the conservation easement, what, wetland line. Um, however, some grading would occur in that area at this side of the pool. So the swimming pool is here, and there's very limited patio with it. There's patio here and at the shallow end of the pool here. And then, if this is the existing patio, they would like to just bump out this area. So that they have a continuous continuation to the swimming pool patio. The pool equipment is proposed here, that is one place where there would need to be a small retaining wall to level out that area between the chimney. And the existing condenser units, and I believe there's, um, some upright propane tanks that would have to be relocated from this area to make that work. And this indicates the pool enclosure fence. If you have any engineering related questions, um, Manny De Silva P E is here tonight. And, um, he can, he can go over any drainage questions and. Um, any other related engineering questions.
Um, maybe I could just go over quickly, um, if you let me share the screen, uh, what we have here for engineering, um. And, uh.
And you are, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, I'll identify. Manny Silva, uh, P E, uh, civil engineer, uh, for Rose Teasong Company, uh, representing the applicant, thirty-five Brentonwood Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. Um, so the, uh, project, um, what we have here is, uh, again, as our. Dr. Danzer and, uh, Tracy explained is, uh, basically two parts. One is the mitigation here and the other one is this proposal for the pool, which I was brought on for. Um, so how we are going to control any kind of stormwater that comes off of, uh, these copings or the area that's being leveled off here. Is by basically, uh, kind of a natural curtain drain around the whole, uh, the pool. And the, the coping, which we collected, well, we collected in a kind of a gravel curtain drain around, around it. As you can see here, the water will come down into this stone and then it has a perforated pipe at the bottom. That then goes down into an underground gallery system with a catch basin top, which is an overflow in case the, the system does get inundated. Um, which, uh, we've designed it up to the twenty-five year storm per year guidelines. Um, the gallery is an open bottom gallery, it's basically like a tank underground, uh, with slots on the sides and open bottom. It'll infiltrate the water into the ground and treat. Um, filter the water through the ground and then, uh, recharge the groundwater. Um, during construction, we have a silt fence perimeter to protect the wetlands offsite, uh, during construction, uh, as there is a disturbed area here. We have our soil stockpile here, which is, has silt fence around it. Um, and then we have our construction entrance here, which is a tracking pad, which will knock off any kind of mud or debris off of the vehicles before it goes into the street. Um, one thing on the background, you know, just was listening in. And I know I've been following this project since it was started, and, um, one thing is, you know, I've been a civil engineer for. You know, around twenty-five years, but one thing was, I used to work at a, at Casper Group, um, in which, uh, did a lot of work within Trumbull. Shelton and a lot of these subdivisions, um, and then one thing that was very familiar to me was looking from a lot of those projects in the eighties. And nineties was that, um, when you had a subdivision like this, um, you had, uh, for instance, this was, this whole ri- road network was put in during the subdivision. And how they did it was, they would have the road drainage and from the lots go into the adjacent waterways. Um, and use the wetland kind of as a conveyance system. Um, and I'm not saying that that's what was, was right or that's how we do it now, but then. They would use the wetland areas as conveyance systems, as you can see, um, even here on Mr., um. On this lot, our subject property, um, I'm going to show you the CAD drawing here. Um, we have discharges from the town, uh, you know, basically from the public right of way into here in two different locations. And then I believe what they did was, is they use this as a conveyance system, almost like a retention pond. Uh, for the water, for the drainage, uh, in the subdivision, and that's why you have this kind of odd. Thing that you normally don't see in nat- natural wetlands, which is a control structure with a weir, overflow weir. And a twenty-four inch pipe that then conveys it to another wetland downstream. Um, so I think, you know, I'm not, I can't say because I wasn't the guy who designed it and it wasn't the, and I couldn't pull the map. Uh, the maps I pulled historically didn't really call it out. But in the eighties, they didn't have essentially upland review areas, so. This conservation easement line most likely was set as an upland review area. So that if any activity were to happen, it would come in front of you, and that's how it was written in the deed. Um, so I think what happened here historically was that you have a subdivision that was created in the late eighties. It was designed to have water conveyance through the wetlands, which was prac, it was common practice in the eighties. Um, and then they use it somewhat as a water, stormwater control area, um, even though, um. Nowadays, you wouldn't do that with wetlands, um. But almost by accident, you can see that it actually does cause, uh, does have some benefit for water treatment from the, uh. Right of way from the road, it's even today, uh, now with our new guidelines from the D E P. You want wet water basins and kind of, uh, things like a wetland to kind of. Filter some of that nutrients and, and things that are coming out of the roadway. Um, like I said, you wouldn't necessarily use a wetland and flood it with, you know, street drainage nowadays. But I think that was common practice in the eighties, and I think that's how this came to be. But I think that was common practice in the eighties and I think that's how this came to be. I think it was just that in the eighties that this was considered kind of a conveyance area that was a a wet area that had wetlands, but. Um, it was this easement lines kind of set as kind of like what you would have as a, uh, hundred foot upland review area. It's kind of much, you know, kind of similar, so that's my two cents, and if there's any, um. Questions as to the engineering, I can answer that or, um. Or any questions about, I guess, the history, you know, how subdivisions were done in history, but. Um, again, I I don't know for sure that's how it was, but that's definitely looks like it to me due to my experience in looking at other older subdivisions in the area.
Um, I have a question for you, where you have that. Real slope coming off the street down to the pool and you're not going to have a, uh, retaining wall. And we get one of our many killer storms that we seem to get quite often now. This pool fills and then the water is just skimming right over and it's going past your drain. Right across and down into the, uh, wetlands. And, uh, you know, a twenty-five year flood, I'm not sure if that's going to handle it, I'm not an engineer, but. I even, uh, questioned that when we're out in the field.
Yeah, so.
How much water can that handle?
So the, the, the gallery system itself, uh, holds, um, I get that that number right here somewhere, where is it? Sorry, I'm zipping around here, holds about a hundred and ninety-two cubic feet of water. Um, so that's, um, a good amount of water, uh, so the hu- the five year, the twenty-five year storm, as you can see in my report. Is in this area is approximately, I think, five inches in twenty-four hours, so that's. The, the design storm that it's supposed to hold. Um, again, we can, that's, that's based on the Trumbull. Requirements, here it is right here, if you go right at the end, the twenty-four hour duration for a twenty-five year storm in this area is five point seven inches, so. We are designed up to five point seven inches of rainfall, which is a substantial amount of water. Um, again, I I see your concern, you have kind of like, uh, the slope that comes down, and even though it's slightly diagonal, it would come into this area. Um, but it would be picked up by that curtain drain and then stored in this, um. In this gallery system and as you, and then it would attempt to infiltrate most of that water, but if it had become. Uh, inundated, it would, uh, come out of this grate here, which, uh, we had, we modeled as a weir, uh, like a two by two weir. Um, and that would, uh, you know, s- spread out and slowly trickle out over this area kind of in a natural. Similar natural way that this, the water would have came across here if the pool wasn't here at all. Um, except that you have now the benefit of some storage, um, to hold back some of that, some of that volume and to delay. Um, that discharge, um, than it would be if it was existing.
All right, and then when this fills, how long does it take to dissipate?
So based on the, 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 uh, you know, our guidelines that we have to follow, we, we shoot for seventy-two hour. Uh, that, that everything has to be drained out within seventy-two hours, so the infiltration rate was relatively high here. Um, in this area where it's a little higher than where Mr. Doctor Danzer took his, uh, testing down here. Um, it was a kind of a silty loam, um. Uh, sandy loam, sorry, sandy loam, and it should, uh, you know, should meet that qualification of being emptied out by before seventy-two hours. Here's our soil testing here.
All right. All right, questions, uh, thank you, by the way, questions from the, uh, commission? During the pause, I was, I aired, by the way, uh, Tracy, can you do me a favor and, uh? Give your company an address, I realize I didn't ask it when you, uh, did your presentation.
Yes, for the record, um, Tracy Shalafu LLC, landscape architect based in Danbury, Connecticut.
Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, any questions for Tracy or for, uh, Manny?
Uh, through the chair, this is Greg. Uh, I don't know who's the best person to answer this, um, using the conservation easement line. How many square feet? Have been built up, planted. Uh, are you, with the pool, you're going to start affecting, what, what is that? Square footage that is being carved out of the conservation easement? Does anyone, do you might calculate that?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now in the CAD drawing, um, so I believe what you're saying is our new work. We're filling in a certain area and how much is that is within the conservation easement square footage wise?
Plus the prior stuff that you want to keep.
Okay.
Including your, uh, patio that attaches to the old patio to the pool.
Correct, so the pool and patio area, coping area, which is right adjacent to the house is six hundred and, what did it say? Six hundred ninety-seven square feet, and then this area here, which is what we, we are going to mitigate some of it, but we're asking to keep. Uh, and Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, we're asking to keep this area here, correct?
Manny, if I might interject, um, you share screen, we can't see your cursor.
Okay, I'm sorry, um. Sharing the wrong screen then, that's what's going on, there you go, share, so I have the CAD drawing here, um. So what I did was I, uh, followed the conservation line, which is right here. And I went to where we have our silt disturbance limit, right, which is our silt fence. And that's about six hundred. Yep, seven hundred, seven hundred square feet, and then the area that we, um, I want to, uh. So this is the area that was filled, but then we were trying to bring it back to here, right? Like this, and that's our disturbance limit there. So we want to keep this grading and then that, that conservation line is right there. Calculations on, you know, on the fly here, but, um, that is an additional thousand square feet, so you're talking only at seventeen hundred total. Says seven hundred new, uh, one thousand of existing that we're looking to keep.
But again, I, I guess the challenge here is. Why should we carve out seven hundred square feet of conservation easement?
So the conservation easement area that like, uh, Tracy was saying, one of the things is that we're just, we're grading in it, right, I mean, I know that's. And and I think the conservation easement in the, the way it's written in the language i- is, is supposed to be taken as, as if it was a, one of your upland review areas. Um, and if there isn't, uh, there's, we have no permanent structures in it, um, that are, you know, above ground. Um, we just have this graded area that we're looking to, um, put, uh, in the conservation easement area. Uh, you know, or I E, upland review area, um, I think the commission has been comfortable with. Similar applications in upland review areas, I know that this has kind of a different title as conservation easement, but I think the way it's written in the deed. It should kind of be taken as, and this is, and I'm not telling you what to do, obviously, the commission can interpret it any way they want to. Um, but in my opinion, uh, this conservation easement, the way it's written is more of an upland review area. Um, that was put in place because. Essentially, you had this wet area that was used as, you know, in my opinion. As kind of a stormwater conveyance area, um, somewhat of a retention pond, but in an existing wetland setting. Um, if you know, you know, similar areas on Bridgeport Avenue like in Shelton, uh, you know. There's some office buildings that have ponds in front of them that have fountains, those were originally. Wetland areas and they were used to as retention, you know, water retention, stormwater holding areas and they got flooded out. Now, was that the right thing to do by today's standards? No, absolutely not. Um, but I think what we have here is a subdivision that was designed. In a way that use the wetlands as a conveyance area, kind of a storm retention conveyance area, um. And they established this conservation easement to so, so that you couldn't construct, you couldn't build into essentially what they were using as a retention pond. Without permission and in here we are, um. One, the cu- the applicant is asking for permission to this pool, but then in the same time, it was discovered that there were some work done in this conservation area. Um, and we're trying to rectify these things, um, with this application, uh, in two parts, I guess, um. So, you know, like I said, the commission can take it out anyways they want. But my interpretation of this conservation easement is, is essentially an upland review area. So that if anything were to happen here, it would be in front of this commission. And as if you, we were doing any work within the hundred foot of a wetland, um, we would have to ask for permission for that and. As long as the impact, you find that the impact is minimal or none to the wetland itself, then. I think the commission would allow it if this was a, you know, a straight up, like a straight application where you had a hundred foot upland review area.
Is there seventeen hundred square feet of? Other space that could be?
Certainly, there's a big wooded area here that's under, you know, that's not disturbed, you know, it's to the left. This is all wooded area, uh, it could be mitigated, but again, um, we could go that route. Um, but, you know, have a, have a area creation, but that's up to the commission. Um, right now, I think what's in front of you is this, if you'd like to see a mitigated area, I guess we could come back and do that.
Um, yeah, I, I would actually, Steve Danzer, for the record again, um. Yeah, um, I would not advocate for going into that wooded area be- because if you go back to my comment about the, those rocks. There was that layer of rocks that were right on the upland, um, yeah, yeah. And if we, if we want to expand that wetland area, it, it'd be incredibly intrusive and disturbing because we'd have to. Claw out those rocks if that's even possible. Um, so I, 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 I'm not sold that, that, that we could do anything productive in, in that area.
My, my point is, how do we, we have obviously scope creep here, that's been going on for whatever, twenty, thirty years. Um, so how do you stop that?
Well, I, I, again, I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with anything they've said and obviously it's, it's your choice, but. I have yet to see evidence that that wetland line goes up there, so I think what we're left at is, is your comfort in, in following the intent of the conservation easement. And I think if you come, go down and you read the language of the conservation easement and you, um, take some of Manny's, um. Recommendations to heart, um, that will enable you to come to that decision. Um, I think what threw me initially and probably may or may not be throwing you is the, that added Latin language that says conservation. Line and wetland limit line. Um, I think you should look at that as a, as an easement line, um, not worry about the wetland limit because under today's standards. Um, you know, I, I basically testify that I believe that the wetland line is down there, so now you're just left with an easement. Um, and then you, at that point, you go back into the language of the easement and the, and if you go back into the language of the easement, you. Might conclude that what they're doing does not violate the nature of the easement, um, that was my conclusion when I read it, I'm not an attorney and more importantly, I'm not the one making that decision. Um, but I believe if you read that, um, you may arrive at that same conclusion.
Mike, where I'm most, uh, unsettled is the area where you have all these arborvitae and you want to keep that.
Tracy?
It's obvious, you know, I mean, that the whole area, this whole riprap area and, um. I don't know how serious that, that erosion was going on, but that's, uh, to me, a, a big chunk of the issue. And then I'm, I'm basically done with my question, that's, that's kind of my thing I'm wrestling with here.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Um, looking at this and listening to the presentation by the, the professionals, Mr. Danzer, Mr. Silva. Michelle Foe, um, you know, I'm a little bit conflicted on this application. Um, you know, seeing conservation easement area, it's very helpful to read the wording of that conservation easement. And for the other commissioners, it was in last month's, um, package. So if you go back in last month's package, you can actually read that, and it does say that, you know. That you can do work with, in that area with the permission of the commission. So, and then looking back on the Connecticut Eco Maps, uh, the Connecticut Viewer, going back to. Um, nineteen ninety, the house wasn't there, um, nineteen thirty-four, it really wasn't there. But two thousand four, the house is there and the limits of the lawn and disturbance. Um, are pretty consistent, um, through the imagery up until, you know, more recently. Um, in two thousand eighteen, I believe, uh, it looks like there was some additional work done or it looks like the. Um, you know, the limits may have expanded a little bit in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, not measurably. Um, and then two thousand twenty-three, you know, there's a big jump in, you know. The clearing and pushing out into that wetland area with the arborvitae's and the riprap, et cetera. Um, and it looks like there's an effort here to, to rein that back in. So, you know, the majority of this disturbance into the conservation easement line area. Most likely was probably done as part of the original house construction. Um, and it may have been approved, I don't know if we can look back and see if there was previous approval. Uh, for additional work on this property by another wetlands commission back in the nineties. Or if Mr. Halquist who built this property just sort of, you know, did the work and got his C O and kept moving. Um, so that would be interesting to find out. Um, with that all being said, it does look like, you know, the, the wording in the easement language. Does allow us to approve work within this area, does not preclude it, it does say that it should be kept in a natural state. Uh, without any change to topography and, you know. In its natural habitat, so to speak. Um, you know, so the, I'm a little bit torn there. And I would like to see some of this area like we've, they're already doing, returning it back to, to wetlands planting. One thought I have is instead of doing a traditional in-ground detention retention system with your gravel. Strip drain, et cetera, and whatnot is, you know, would there be the opportunity here to do a rain garden? Um, berm off an area and create a rain garden along the wetland limit lines on the uphill side of the wetlands limit line. So that, you know, you, we can get that water storage, we can. Get a portion of this area returned to what's supposed to be in its natural state and have it be functional. But still allow the homeowner to maintain areas that he's used to. Majority of those areas that he's used to enjoying on his property. You know, and then looking at the proposed plan. Some of the alternatives that were presented certainly le- have less of an impact within the. Conservation easement area, but, you know, based on that, the wording of that easement, we do have the ability to. To approve that work if we want to. Um, with all that being said, you know, it's, I'm a little torn on this project.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Uh, I, I tend to agree with a lot of what Commissioner Vresby said, also, um, in regards to the creation of wetlands, we kind of just dealt with this in the last application and then the applicant. Brought it up again here, um, a lot of times the creation of the wetlands, while well-intended. Often has tremendous deleterious effects on the property and, and the function of the wetland. It seems that doesn't often make sense to be extremely invasive into that area. Um, just for the sake of saying, hey, look, we've created new wetlands, uh, there certainly are other options available on this property. That would contribute more positively to the, the overall function of the ecosystem, the wetland as a whole. Rather than the somewhat haphazard creation of new wetlands, which would by definition require tremendous encroachment. Um, I think there are alternatives that not only are more effective, probably are significantly cheaper. Thank you.
All right. I'm not an advocate of going into the woodland area and creating wetlands, I'd rather see. You know, a rain garden created. You know, just by wetland flag fifteen from seventeen or fourteen to seventeen, somewhere in there. Where you could do a linear rain garden, you could catch all that water and, you know, it would be, it would be effective. It would be a better solution, potentially a better solution, um, for the environment. It would be a better solution, potentially a better solution, um, for the environment than um, doing in-ground, an in-ground system.
All right, if, uh, are there any other questions from the commission? Because otherwise I'm going to ask.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Is this property still on sewer, sanitary sewer? Septic, I should say.
Yes, that's correct, septic.
What would happen if that field fails? Where would you put us another field?
Manny Silva from Roast Tizo again. Um, I believe, uh, the, um, the, uh, when I pulled the septic plans from the health department, um, the, uh, reserve area was to this, was here in this area out here. Just so, so you have three leaching, here you go, here's the leaching fields right now. So the leaching fields are, uh, there's one row here. Oops, it's not selecting for some reason, there's one row here. There's another, oop. Sorry. There's another row here.
The point you're making is it would be outside the conservation area, so.
Correct, it'd be here off to the side, it's similar elevation.
Isn't that, isn't that a wooded area?
Correct. But they wouldn't, you know, that's where the, when they approved the house, that's where they had the reserve area was somewhere out here. Like this, you know, obviously not in this orientation, but, um, but it was out in this area.
You wouldn't attempt to go into the conservation easement area?
No, that, there's an approved, uh, reserve area out here.
You'd probably repair the primary area first, if you could.
Correct.
The B one hundred should be submitted, just for the record. You know, typically it's shown on the plans.
Yeah, we went to the health, this was signed off by the health department. Um, we did sections through this area here to ensure that there's no interaction from the existing septic field and the proposal.
When did they go to twenty-five feet for pool to a septic trench? Typically, it's been fifty.
It's fifty downhill until, unless you can demonstrate, um, that there's, there wouldn't be any interaction between them. And since these fields, I mean, these are approximate locations, but they're essentially parallel to the contours. They don't cross contours like this. So they're essentially heading this way. Um, the, uh, you know, the affluent plume, um, would be going in this direction. Um, and what it is, is that this is not a complete in-ground pool. It's kind of like at, we, we set the elevation, so it's only partially in-ground. Um, and with that, and when we did our sections, I could, I could probably, oh, they're not here anymore. But there was a section here, um, where we, let me see if I could pull it up in a PDF. I don't know if I have it here, but, um, basically what it is, is that when you have, um, I don't have the section here, but here's the leaching, the leaching fields and then the influence plume. This is kind of, let me rotate, D view. Sorry about this. I wasn't, I wasn't looking to, uh, show this, but twist.
So the elevation of the pool is at three thirty-five, your septic trench, your lowest one is somewhere around three thirty-eight. You figure it's down to three thirty-five to the bottom of the trench. And with your percolation rate, the water is going down faster than it could reach the pool.
Correct, it doesn't interact. So it actually, the, the, here's the, the two to one conservative slope and it goes below the pool. I know this is on a rotation, but, um, here, let me just rotate this real quick. It's in a different file, but. Let me just, for illustration purposes, so here's your pool, uh, had an elevation at the, at the top of three thirty-four and a half. Here's your leaching fields. And to be conservative, we took that plume starting from the top of the, of the trench, not the bottom. And then we did a two to one, whereas normally it's a one to one, that's how water kind of flows. And even then, with our conservative, uh, measurements, uh, there's no interaction between the pollution plume and the, uh, or the affluent plume and the, uh, and the, uh, actual, uh, pool itself. So the health department was comfortable with, uh, with that. And they, uh, they signed off on the application.
Now, are these the original fields from the septic system? Have they ever been repaired before or we have thirty-five year old fields there now?
As far as I remember, the records, uh, show that these are the original fields.
So they will, they will fail probably pretty soon. Thirty-five years for septic fields is, you never know, they can go longer.
I, I've seen him, I've, I've seen him go like fifty, but I mean, uh, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, well, fifty is only fifteen more years, so it's gonna fail.
It all depends on the soils underneath it.
So the applicant itself should be very aware that they could fail and should probably pump his septic system every two years at this point. I would recommend that. And keep an eye, as soon as you see something bubbling up, you better get a septic.
Yeah, appreciate that. I've been very, uh, been very diligent because to your point, I'm, I'm concerned twenty-eight years later that, you know, who knows, right? So appreciate, now do it every two years, please.
All right, at this point, I'm going to, uh, ask our town engineer to give us a history of the, uh, this project. Tatiana? Can you walk us through from, uh, you know, two thousand eighteen on?
Uh, well, actually I did want to note something that in going through the original approval from nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, there is a note, uh, in the minutes statement that the wetlands were flagged. So at least according to that documentation, it appears that someone flagged them. I don't know if the criteria was the same or not, but that's in the documents. Um, I also wanted to note that two thousand sixteen topography taken from LiDAR. Um, the top shot shots are accurate, but the density typically those are taken about fifty feet apart. So pulling the topography from there entirely may not give the oh, very accurate picture. However, I did want to share with the commission, um, aerials comparison. Oh, just give me one second. All right, um. So this, uh, this top shot or aerial shot is from two thousand nineteen, which was immediately following applicant, um, getting a, um, property ownership. And as I slide to the right, then you will see a topography from twenty twenty-three. So the limits between the fence, uh, and the evergreens and beyond, um, the distance is quite apparent. Um, and also the lawn has been quite extended quite a bit into the wetlands with the gravel and such. And actually this is the evidence, apparently the work was done in the spring of twenty twenty-three. So that's just for visual reference. I believe the original fence line, um, was following the conservation easement and then it kind of went this way. So I do agree with some of the statements that the lawn, um, exceeded, you know, encroached into the conservation line, however, not by as much as it does today. So that is just a visual for you all. Um, and then in terms of.
And I believe you sent that out, right?
Uh, I just sent a PDF because I couldn't send that slider. You kind of have to turn on those contours to, uh, really manipulate this thing. But it's, I think, a good visual for everyone to see what's been occurring there. Um, but just to give a history. So prior to, uh, June of twenty eighteen, when this property was transferred to the current owner. I personally had an in-person conversation with him and, um, the town engineer also. Um, I also went through a written correspondence. So the staff, the town shared in April of twenty eighteen, a record map that everyone saw from nineteen seven with the conservation easement line. And also we shared the wetlands regulations that was in writing. Um, then again, in June of twenty eighteen, uh, current owner, um, got the property. In April of twenty nineteen, uh, we have shared in writing a copy of approved plans from nineteen ninety-seven, conservation easement, wetlands easement line. Same was sent on September of twenty nineteen. Uh, in February of twenty twenty-one, uh, we sent a checklist to the applicant for moving the fence and adding some fill within the conservation easement. We shared again the record map and we've advised the applicant to appear before the wetlands commission as the conservation easement states. Um, we have again followed up on another email in February of twenty-one with application package and meeting schedule. Um, and between those written correspondences, we've had multiple in-person and phone conversations with the applicant. Um, and then in September of twenty-four, um, we've had a conversation about the pool where all of this uh, fill became apparent and that's when the notice of violation was issued. So just from the staff perspective, you know, we've, we went above and beyond in informing the applicant as to what the regulations are, the conservation easement, um, the language. It, I disagree with the statement that it should be treated as an upland review area because then it wouldn't, um, be needed. And despite all of this guidance, the applicant went ahead and decided to not honor the regulations and what's been put in place back in nineteen ninety-seven. So that's just a history how, how it all came about. Um, now, couple other comments that were discussed in terms of the hundred year storm. Um, we have requested the system is sized to a hundred year because of the topography, not twenty-five years. Um, and we did also note in our original comment letter that there is a leak off, off of the driveway that was existing. It wasn't something that the current owner put in place. Uh, but we've asked that this is, um, considered to be treated. Um, while it's not part of the current proposal, I do encourage the commission to consider including that in a remediation plan and treating the water quality volume for the driveway because it's going directly into the wetland. So I think it will be very beneficial, um, to, you know, put a small, small system. So that's just a consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
I have, uh, through the chair. Uh, Tatiana, you said this, uh, driveway, um.
There is a leak off, if you look on the maps, um, again, it was existing.
A leak off.
Leak off, correct. Oh, there you go, maybe, uh, yep. There is a runoff.
And it's coming from the house?
It's coming from the driveway.
Just the driveway.
So how, how would you like us to handle that, Tatiana? Stop it from going into the wetlands or?
Um, no, no.
Kind of detention there?
Treat a water quality volume would be most beneficial. It can be on the underground or rain garden, anything applicant wishes to put in there. But, uh, considering the scope of unpermitted activities, I believe it would be appropriate to put a small system and, um, help with water quality.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as I understand it, the fence that was there really was the, um, boundary marker for uh, what is the conservation area then, right?
Um, it appears it correlates roughly with the original conservation easement line. And again, the lawn beyond that was kind of open.
All right. Okay, other commissioners, thoughts, questions?
To the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Um, I, I mentioned that I am definitely torn on this application and, you know, the, the history of the correspondence and the the, the not following the regulations and just sort of going and doing whatever they want anyways. Is the part that tears me up the most on this, these sort of projects because, you know, these, this commission has always been sort of fair and easy, not easy, but fair and, and considerative homeowners. And when we get ignored and the regulations get ignored, people go off and do their own things. It's, it's bothersome.
Yeah, and.
And there's a lot of work that was done from when the homeowner bought the property to now knowing that you're supposed to get, you were supposed to get approvals to come before this commission to get approvals to do that work and you did not.
I, I appreciate the feedback, uh, from, from where I sit. Um, I was only informed of the violation most recently, but.
But you were informed of the regulations numerous times before doing the work and before you bought the property.
And in two thousand twenty-one, you were asked to do an application, so.
Yeah, that, that I don't have.
I'd be happy to write a copy of the email.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great. Yeah, if it, if it was an email and not a hard copy and I missed it, I apologize, but that was not my intention.
Good, Bob?
Yeah, so, Consular, what action do we have against the candidate? Or do we have any legal action? As far as violations.
Well, there's, there's a pending violation right now. And so this application is intended to remediate or rectify the violation. In some instances, we have had the applicant agree to the payment of a, a fine as part of a condition of approval, and that could be something that I think could be considered here. But I think what's before you here is, is the, is, you know, an application to try to correct the, the error.
Should this application be divided into a remediation application and then a pool application? Because I don't see how we can go forward with approving a, a proposed pool or additional work when there is a violation that needs to be addressed and remediated.
Well, I agree with you on that, David, because the, the issue I'm having is I find the restoration plan inadequate. Um, I'd like to, you know, see more done with it because again, um, if you look like up, one area they had, and I went through this, one area had four feet of topsoil put on it near the house. I mean, there's a lot of fill and this is, you know, it, I'd like to say it was done in the, you know, past history, but unfortunately a lot of this work was done from two thousand eighteen on. We have aerials that show it. So, uh, see what, um, what the other commissioners are thinking.
Through the chair.
Yeah, I like the idea of, uh, of the remediation first as, uh, Mr. Commissioner Respeck had mentioned. Deal with the remediation first and then deal with the pool issue. If the remediation is satisfactory to the commission, then we can proceed with the possibility of adding pool.
Okay, uh, David, you had a comment?
I'm just, was just going to add that, you know, the, the correspondence history from when the prop, property was purchased to now doesn't lead me to believe that, you know, if this was all kept as one application, that the remediation would actually be done. As part of the application. So I would like to see that work completed and then we can, we can address. So I would like to see that work completed and then we can, we can address. The pool. And like the, the, as the easement does say, we have the ability to approve work within that area if we so choose. I think it's important to read that language so that we are staying within our rights.
Oh, do you agree that I think we need a more extensive, um, remediation restoration plan?
Yes, start with the remediation first.
Yes.
Yeah, but have it submitted to the commission for review in conjunction with the engineering and our, and our group of engineers as well. For evaluation and then bring it before the, uh, commission for a possible even additional remediation.
Uh, Rich, did I see your hand up before?
Uh, yeah, in regards to the, you know, obviously we have a limited construction season, um, and remediation. Uh, we, we've said before is, is often troublesome, but when you brought up the fact that there was four feet of fill there. Um, I don't know if, if test pits were needed, I mean, the source of that fill. Now, if that fill was placed there and it was all approved, then that's great, um, but I think what Mr. Verespi was getting at is there's, there's also some. Discrepancy in, in the fill, uh, maybe he could clarify.
Um, it would be great to go back and see if we could establish where that line of lawn was. In two thousand sixteen or two thousand ten. Um. Where it was pretty consistent for a long period of time, it would be great to. Figure out where that line was based on the aerials and have that added to the survey map and then, you know.
Be able to. Do that with a couple test borings?
I, I think it would be better off doing it with the aerial surveys. And the aerial photography, I, I don't know the best way to, to do that, that's probably how I would go about it, overlaying them. Um, to see where, where was that line before? And then, you know, where, where did it encroach to so that we can. Be able to say, you know, this is, this is what the established line was for years and then. You know, this is when we broke from that and get back to where that line was.
And if that's something that's on a map, it should be able to be located in just minutes.
Well, it's part of all the aerial photography.
Based on those overlays, are we requesting a, a map be drawn to show where they, where the law has been extended? And have a continuance and, and take a look at that, decide where to go? Because we really don't know where that line is now.
We don't know where it was, we know where it is today, we don't know where it was.
Yeah, exactly, the only evidence that we have is the overlay that we saw from Tatiana. That could be. Yeah. But it's evidence.
But, but John, we have detailed files, we have maps, we have overhead even without, and I thought, you know, a couple test borings would solve everything. But I mean, we, we have.
They're only boring down twenty inches and, and we think we have three feet of fill, so.
That's exactly what you just brought up, John, that's what's bothering me is the deepest that they went. Thirty inches on, um, number, uh, what was the number three? If you're looking at two, three feet of topsoil.
Yeah.
Uh, you're not, you're not getting into, and again, remember wetlands is all about the soil mixture, so. I'm just concerned that we're just testing nothing more than the, uh, topsoil that was on there.
Is it possible?
That's why originally my thought was to ask the commission if they wanted to, uh, bring in a, uh, another soil scientist, but. But I think we need to do is, has had, they've got to be, uh, you know, more extensive and deeper because. As we're looking, there are areas that have, uh, a foot, two foot, three foot of, uh, of topsoil, so.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to?
I look at. Is the, the aerial photography from two thousand four up to through like two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen. The limits of disturbance are pretty consistent, so. I'm kind of thinking that that was what was approved, that's what the building permit, the C O was signed off on that limit of disturbance. And the officials at that point in time were good with everything as it stood. And then once it started changing in two thousand eighteen, that's when there's the break. Um. To find out where that original limit of lawn was versus where it is today would be the most valuable thing because. When Hulk was built the house, he may have put three feet of fill off the back when he dug out for the foundation and he didn't take it off the site. And, you know, building department signed off on it and wetlands may have approved that at that point in time is building, part of building the house. We can't go back and revisit that, but we can go back and look and say, from two thousand eighteen on, you were supposed to get permits to do a certain. To do work out here and you didn't, and then this area was affected. And, you know, based on the contour maps, we can see that it was changed. And that's what we have to work with.
Oh, the other concern is where you see the white fence, once that was removed and then. It appears the grass area went right down to the, uh, wetlands, so.
After two thousand eighteen, I believe.
Right, so. Um, so I think we need, uh.
What, what I will, what, what I will say is that there was a pre-existing soil behind that fence and to. Mister Danzer's point earlier, the reason why I had taken action at that point was because there was so much erosion underneath that white fence. That it was literally, you know, at least two feet, so yes, I totally take ownership on the fact that I should have came to the town first. Uh, but I was looking at it as protecting the lawn because there was such an excessive amount of erosion and there was existing soil behind it. Which could have been from the dolder to your point, so.
Uh, what I, what I picked up.
Sort of emergency stuff.
Yeah. I, I totally understand and, and agree, so I take full ownership.
Alright, well, what I'm picking up from our town engineer on the, uh, emails and conversations is. You went to her for guidance and looked for compliance and you didn't follow through, so. My feelings right now is I think we need to, uh. Get more information on this, I'd like to, uh, see if the, uh, you know, uh, commission agrees. I'd like to see a, uh, more extensive restoration plan, I'd like to see the, uh. Way of marking what was there in two thousand sixteen as opposed to what is there, I mean, it's, it's a little confusing. Because of the amount of work that was done and the grass that was allowed to go through, so. Um, that's where I'll put it to the commission, we'll talk and, uh, you know, see what your feelings are. But I think what I'm picking up is that. A majority of you feel that we've got to get the restoration plan approved and in place before we move ahead with the, uh, pool. I'm going to do a quick straw pool, are you agreed to that, Bob?
Yes, I agree with you, what's the term?
Carmine?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I, I'm, I'm also a, a yes on that, so.
I think we could roll in if, if the engineer and the landscape architect and the client feel that a rain garden in that area. Would support a future pool, I think you could roll it into this part of the remediation and kind of make it part of it. Which might give you your additional remediation, but also, you know, be helpful.
It'd be something looking down, uh, uh, to kind of help with their, uh, with the pool.
Yeah, looking forward.
Right, no, well.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion on that?
Um, yeah, in a moment we will, but, uh, I also think that, uh, we're, we're going to have to, uh. Go for an extension on this to a continuance until our next meeting.
This is also a public hearing, do we need to ask the public if they need to input at this point?
Yep, in a moment, thank you very, very much, uh, I'm looking right at public right now. Um, any other, go ahead, John, before we go to.
So in con- continuing this, are we still considering the pool as part of the application or is the pool not to be considered anymore and anymore? Prints that come to us shouldn't, should not include the pool, I just want to hear how the chairman feels about this.
Oh, I'm, from what I'm picking up from the commission and myself is that we have to handle the remediation and the restoration first. Then they come back with the, uh, the pool.
So there'll be no more discussion about the pool except in the case of we're doing this and, and we're thinking of a second application to support it.
Normally, you know, I've been on a long time, you've been on, uh, longer than I have, we try to work with people, but I mean. You know, it's, it's obvious, they reached out, they were told, and I'm talking about the applicant.
Trying to help him again.
Four years ago, back in two thousand twenty one, an application was requested, so, uh, you know, I think we have to. Go into steps and the first step is getting the restoration plan and the, uh, wetlands handled.
And I'm sorry because I did not receive that notification in two thousand twenty one, I, I would have thought it would have came in. Hard mail, it's not my character to ignore anything, especially at that importance, so.
Yeah, but you had the other conversations and things too that you went to, I, I, I've got to tell you, uh. And again, I, I've dealt with a lot of engineers, I've done this for a lot of years, I, I'm a builder and. I had to tell you, Tatiana is pretty sharp and, uh, she very detailed oriented and that's what went through this and. And, and again, we like to work with people, but I mean, you know, again, she kind of guided you, you went your own way. You went back to her, you went your own way, so again. Now, and again, we don't like to be, uh, punitive or mean to anybody, I try to work with everyone, but. Right now, this is, uh, in, in my thinking and the commission. It's going to be a two-step process, you've got to take care of one before we go to the other. And I will put that to an official, uh, vote to see if everyone does agree with that officially.
M- Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, uh, Consular.
So there is an application before you, so the, the, you know, you would have to make a determination to deny the, the pool. And proceed with something else, which would probably be a vote at the end unless the applicant. Would agree to revise his application and just, um, submit as the commission is requesting at this time. At the next meeting, a revised application, which is only for the remediation.
What are your thoughts on that, uh? Mister Giuliano, you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's probably what, what the commission is, is looking for, right, so, um. So you want, want to do what's best, put the best step forward and, and like I said, take ownership and. Do what I have to do here, um, again, it was not my intention through any correspondence that was missed on my side, I, I really would not. Ignore a request or, or any type of guidance, so. I, aside from when I went initially on, on, on the pool. Was when I was learned about the violation and I immediately jumped on it and hired professionals to put a plan in place and was very thorough with it. And, you know, it's been a lot of time and money to get to this point.
Alright, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Mister Chikrin, I think you brought two important points, uh, it's restoration and remediation, I think it's a twofold, uh. Question and twofold approach, both the restoration and remediation, as you mentioned.
Alright, uh, Consular, should we, uh? Do that as a motion and then the, uh, second motion will be, will deny the, uh, pool and, and the, uh. What are your thoughts?
No, I think, I think we're, we're continuing the hearing. Um, and the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Giuliano or any of your, uh, representatives. Um, Mister and Doctor Danzer, Mister Silva. Yeah, the applicant's agreeing to revise the application to come in only with the remediation plan. So you're going to continue the hearing, the application will be revised and resubmitted for the next meeting with, with the remediation only. If that's the applicant's intent, then there's nothing to vote on tonight, except to continue the hearing and we have to allow for public comment tonight.
Alright, thank you, thank you, any other, uh, thoughts before I go to the public? Alright, Mister Chin, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
Uh, yes, sir, Mister, um, Miss Epstein would like to make a comment.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, good evening, um, my name is Janet Epstein, I live at seventy six Old Dyke Road. Um, I, uh.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
Found you.
Yeah, I, I participate a lot and I learn a lot by, uh, being at these meetings. And I particularly appreciate the conversation that has occurred since Tatiana, uh, reviewed the communication history. Uh, of this application or, uh, this application and the violation. Um, I think that creating a community culture, using all available means. Including consistent and substantive fines as well as education and many of you know that I've been involved in trying to educate our community. Um, is needed to promote respect for town regulations and the value of our environment. And, um, my final point is that, um, as Mister Gerard mentioned. We, we get second opinions, uh, in the case of illness or disease. And from my experience listening to all of you over the years, it's been helpful to have. Second opinions or third party opinions in complex issues like this and I would request that you consider that. And I do appreciate all your hard work and investment in, um, safeguarding, um, our wetlands, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Epstein. Is there anyone else, um, Bill?
Well, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment at this time, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. Well, Mister Chairman, does not appear that any other comments, uh, that anyone else would like to make a comment.
Alright, I thank you, um. Alright, Greg, can you make a, uh, motion for a continuance of application twenty five dash thirteen? That will, um, result in a revision of the existing application, go ahead.
One comment before we do that, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, John.
Miss Epstein brought up the, the idea and you had brought up the idea of. Um, third-party wetlands testing to verify the wetlands limit line. Um, I would like to know what the commissions take on that, I don't necessarily feel it's needed or warranted at this point in time. Um, but it would certainly defer to the commission and I think it, we owe it to the public to. Address the one issue that was, or recommendation that was brought up.
Uh, David's basically bringing up is that my concern was, and again, I'm not questioning, uh. Mister Danzer's abilities or any of that, but with the amount of topsoil that was. Put out through the, uh, this overall property. If you go down a foot, you go down eighteen inches, I don't know if you're getting anywhere near the original, uh. Uh, you know, wetland soil. So again, we can.
My concern with that is there may have been work that was approved by a previous commission that was done as part of the building, original construction. And, you know, the current homeowner can't necessarily be responsible for that, or, you know, it may have been approved.
Oh, again, uh, Tatiana, wouldn't we have seen that on this address if any of that was the case? Because I know when we've had a, applications come before us that have been prior applications or. Uh, you had one person that came in, did an application and then a house was sold, they wanted to do something, we usually follow. The, uh, you know, the paperwork.
Yeah, it's.
Have you or John seen anything on this? Because I did ask John to go back into the history and, uh. Uh, look at this from, um, uh, I believe it was Haw- Hawquist Builders that did this, I want to say ninety seven if I'm correct. John, did you find anything?
Uh, no, I have not seen any applications or approvals since the initial application for the house.
So nothing from wetlands through that period up to now?
Correct.
Alright. Because I know there's nothing from, uh, John, I think goes back to like ninety nine, two thousand, I go just a little bit past him, I. Not seen this property before, so. So.
Uh, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the commission had a consensus in terms of, uh, perhaps the restoration plan has to be enhanced. And if I heard everyone correctly, perhaps they want to restore the twenty sixteen lawn line and show it. And perhaps work with that, um, it won't hurt to buff it up those areas, but in fairness. Um, you know, we want, we probably shouldn't be going, uh, after the current homeowner. So everything that's been done since twenty eighteen and on is substantial and that should be remediated. And before that, um, I would tread lightly, uh, it would just be my, my position.
And I agree with you thoroughly, and as does, I'm seeing John, same thing. I said, yeah.
Um, and one other noted, it appears that there's a call-in user. They just joined uh after the previous public comment. And they raised their hands, so I'm not sure of the commission.
No problem. Can you bring them in, Mister Chin?
Uh, yes, sir, one moment.
Thank you.
Uh, the call-in user, I've given you permission to speak, um. There's a code that you have to press. There you go.
Alright, and if you can identify yourself and give your address, please.
Uh, it appears they're gone. And I don't think it was a real person, so. I had my hand over the mute button.
Alright. So we're good as far as the public. No one else then?
Uh, there are no other members of the public. Except Miss Epstein who spoke.
Alright. Um. Okay, well, at this point, uh, Greg. You make a uh motion to uh.
Yep, and make a motion. To continue, uh. Uh, the public hearing for application twenty five thirteen. Uh, to July first next month. Um, where the applicant agrees to modify. Their application. To focus on remediation plan. Based on changes from two eighteen forward.
Alright, um, Tatiana, are we missing anything? I say.
About the restoration part.
Yep. There's gonna, go ahead. Carmine, I say, are you meditating?
Yeah, through, no, through the chair. Should the revised application remove any reference about the pool?
Yeah, the pool is a uh is not going to be part of the new application, so that was agreed to.
Be removed from the drawings.
Yes, yes. And back to uh uh Bob Fergno's comment. Yes, it would be remediation slash restoration. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Chair.
Alright, so we've got that out. Who wants to second it?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, I'm seconded by uh David, okay. I'm a yes. Carmine?
Yeah.
Greg?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes, and Rich?
Yes.
Alright, we will see you back on July first then. Um. Greg, do you have a moment to go over the uh minutes from May sixth?
Yes, I do. Uh, I make a uh motion to uh. Approve the minutes of the town at Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission meeting held on May sixth, two thousand twenty five.
Alright, seconded by. Bob Fergno, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Um. Colleen, is there anything else that has to come before the commission?
No, sir.
Alright, um, I'm gonna take a quick moment. I know it's late. Anything to report, um, uh, Rich on uh P and Z? Anything happening with Nichols or anything else that's going to come before us?
Uh, that'll be before.
And twenty-five words or less.
Sure. Last meeting was canceled due to unforeseen reasons. Um, having to do with uh needing to gather more information. There'll be third Wednesday of the month this time. You'll have the bill and unity and um some other important projects. Uh, please be sure to um. Attend the meeting so you can learn firsthand how it goes.
Well, it's gonna come before us. I I I I don't know, uh.
It's not gonna come anytime soon because.
Yeah, I don't think that's good if uh we're beyond wetlands and we know it's coming to us. I don't, I don't know. Am I wrong to not attend that?
Well, the first.
Asking for some legal advice from our town attorney here.
I. It's, it's certainly okay to, uh. Attend or watch online, what have you, the meetings. I don't know that participating in the meeting is advised.
No, 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 that I know I wouldn't do, so.
There's, you're, there's a.
What were the dates again, Richard?
Um, I'm sorry.
What were the dates?
Third, third, third Wednesday of the month, so I believe that's the eighteenth this month. Uh, it's it's a long way from getting to wetlands. If it, if the zone change is approved, which it may, it may not, we'll see. If the zone change is approved and applied to that particular property. Then and only then could they move forward, so it's a. It's, there's, there's still some uh. Opportunities. To uh learn more about the process coming up, but. It's in no way guaranteed either way. And uh, again, it's, it's, it's not like there's a pending application. They have to have that zone. Approved for use before they can apply.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Attorney Cordon, anything before we uh conclude?
No, sir.
Alright, as always, thank you. I appreciate everything and uh. There be no objections, I move to adjourn and I thank you all. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.